I'm good.
All right, so let's get to we're gonna bring the Town of Wapanger zoning Board of Appeals, June twenty-third, twenty-twenty, uh, meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please, B?
Mr. Barr?
Present.
Mr. Delacorte?
I'm here.
Mr. Lorenzini?
Here.
Mr. Gallardi?
I am here as well. First item of business on tonight's agenda would be the acceptance of the minutes from June ninth, twenty-twenty. Did all board members have a chance to review those?
Yes.
Yes.
This is Tom, yes.
Okay, any changes or revisions to those? None?
None.
All right, can I have a motion, please, to accept the minutes of June ninth?
I'll make that.
Yeah, this is Dan, but give a motion to accept.
I'm standing, okay.
Yeah, you have a second, please?
This is Tom, I'll second.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, so moved. All right, second item on the agenda this evening is public hearing. Appeal number twenty-seven-seven-zero-two, Sean Higgins seeking an area variance, section two-forty-dash-thirty-seven of the district regulations and an R forty zoning district. Where fifty feet is required to the rear property line, the applicant can provide fifteen feet for the installation of a twenty-four-foot above-ground pool, thus requesting a variance of thirty-five feet. The property is located at twenty-six Thompson Terrace and is identified as tax grid number six-two-five-six-dash-zero-two-dash-six-one-nine-nine-zero-four in the Town of Wapanger. I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing.
John will do that. Make the motion.
Can I have a second, please?
Uh, Dave, a second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, so moved. Okay, Sean Higgins, I see you on the line there, correct? Okay, you're muted, Sean. Can you hear me? There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, did you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Sean, at this time, we ask the applicant to just give a brief description for the benefit of the board and anybody listening in, exactly what you need and what you needed for.
Okay, thanks for, uh, hosting the meeting. Thanks for all, everyone for being here. Um, my intention was to put a pool up in my yard that's a little bit setback on my property and into the corner where it provides a little more privacy, it is a little more aesthetically pleasing on the eye for either passersby, um, while as being able to keep, uh, a large portion of my property for my kids to be able to, uh, use the property still for sports and various other things by putting it, you know, closer to the lines that are predetermined, uh, would inhibit that a little bit. So the reason for me moving it back, you know, is a combination of doing it for the kids and also for privacy issue.
Okay, all right, now, we all, we all, we all did have a look, Tom, you had a look as well, correct?
Yeah, Pete, I went out yesterday, thank you.
Okay, yeah, so we all had a look, we see, we all kind of see what you're up against there. Your lot is, is wide, not that deep, and, uh, we see the circumstances, uh, that you have there where you want to put the pool and, and what your encumbrances are. Uh, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't have any questions. I asked the board members at this time if they would have any questions for Sean to, uh, to let us know. Anybody have any questions from the board?
No. No, I'd like to say, Pete, uh, this is Tom, that I did go out there yesterday and, uh, you're correct about the situation, um, regarding the size of the lot and the placement. Thank you.
Yeah, all right, so let the record show, no more questions from the board. Is there anyone on this call, uh, that have any, uh, issues or questions or objections to Sean's application?
No.
Okay, so let, let, let the record show, please, that the public has no other, uh, questions or issues with Sean's application. So this time then I would ask, uh...
Can we add something?
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Who's, go ahead, who's this?
I'm sorry, yeah, hi, I'm Dan, I'm Dan Tierney, and it's, uh, my property that the pool abates, it comes up against Sean Higgins' property.
What would be your address?
Uh, thirty-one Rallier Terrace.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so wooded lot and, um, it's, it's one acre, I mean, the total acre terrace, two acres, so, um, for purposes of just keeping, preserving the value of the lot, I just want to make sure, I mean, I don't know if the pool would impact, uh, someone in the future building a house in that area, if there was a concern there at all, because the value of the property is more of its, if, you know, somebody could septic and build a, a house, I have no plans to do it, but, you know, probably in the not-too-distant future, hopefully, uh, sell the entire property. So I didn't know if a pool that close would impact the septic or well or anything of that nature. And I, I believe it, it doesn't, but, and I don't know if that's a question for tonight.
Are you, are you, is your, your lot that up to Sean's?
Correct, yes.
Is that, and, and you're, is so, the, the lot immediately that abuts Sean's property line, that is part of your property?
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
It's a wooded lot, you probably saw that.
Yeah, yeah, there seems to be quite a distance between, uh, currently where, where he's proposing to put the pool in the house immediately behind him, but there's a lot of woods in between, so that's part of, that's part of the same lot? Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, it's part of, uh, part of the property here. It's just about half of it is woods, but, you know, I'm concerned about the, I just wanted to know what the logistics of it are as far as keeping it a buildable, possible buildable lot in the future.
Yeah, I think the, the, the pool, as far as we're concerned, you know, should not impact that. I don't know if anybody else.
Okay, good. Okay, so a pool there would not impact that?
Yeah, not as, as far as we're concerned.
Good to know. And then my other question was, uh, how do we determine where the property line is?
Okay, sorry, say that again?
Uh, how, how do we determine where the property line is? Because there's nothing demarcating the line at this point. I don't know if you measure from the street in or, you know?
Well, yeah, we, so we had a ser-, yeah, we had a survey that indicated where the rear property line would be, and the, and the survey denotes the distance to the pool to the rear property line.
Okay, so it's, um, but how do we measure the line, the property line itself? Because right now, there's nothing there.
Hey, Barbara, go ahead.
So, and I believe I spoke to you the other day, Matt.
Oh, is that?
Yeah, I'm the person.
Hi, Barbara.
Hi.
Yeah, I did talk.
So he has a survey, and it very easily can be measured from the back of his house to the property line, and that would give him an idea where it was. The survey's not an old survey, so he can also locate the rebar in both corners of his property from left to right of the house. So with the survey, for, for his property, it would be easy to measure off. You could also measure from the front pavement to the property line and then to the back of the pool. For your property, if you were trying to measure from your house, you'd have to have your own survey where we could measure from.
Okay.
And as far as the pool goes, when someone's doing a two-lot subdivision, which was a question that you had, the two-lot subdivisions looked more for zoning conformance, lot size, can it handle a well and a septic in that neighborhood, uh, but in general, they don't look for accessory structures impacting in any direction.
Okay, thank you, Barbara.
Okay, so we're good, Matt?
Mr. Chair, can you let the record reflect that, um, member Shaw is now joining the meeting?
Yes.
I believe.
Okay, so Lisa's in. All right, Lisa, you're muted now.
Yeah.
There you go. All right, you're, you're in good shape now.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So if there's are not any more questions from the public, then I would ask the board to make a motion to close the public hearing?
This is John, I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second, please?
Uh, this is Tom, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
So moved. Could I have now a motion to approve or deny the variance, please?
Um, I can make a motion to have we grant the variance. Um, the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood. Uh, there is no substantial detriment created to nearby properties. Um, there is other feasible means available for the applicant to pursue to achieve the benefit. Uh, the requested variance is substantial. Um, proposed variance will not have an adverse impact or effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, and, uh, the alleged difficulty is self-created.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, please?
Uh, second.
All right, roll call, please, B?
Mr. Barr?
Uh, vote for a free.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Lorenzini?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Gallardi?
Yes, approved as well. So your, your variance is approved, Sean? I believe, uh, the building department, B, might have a little work for you or some paperwork, right, B?
Right, we gotta get his, uh, variance application, uh, approved and we'll pass, go through the building department, and they'll be calling him about the permits.
Okay, all right, Sean, so you're all set?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Dan.
You're welcome, Sean. Enjoy your pool.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Okay, so the second item on tonight's agenda is appeal number nineteen-seven-six-eight-nine, commercial variance, Tarpon Towers Two LLC, wireless telecommunications facility, seeking an area variance, section two-forty... eighty-one G four C two of the district regulations and an R forty slash eighty zoning district, where no tower can be located closer than seven-hundred-and-fifty feet on a horizontal plane to an existing dwelling unit. The applicant can provide, I have to read through a few, so bear with me. The applicant can provide six-hundred-seventy-eight feet to one-oh-six Caroline Drive East, tax grid number six-zero-five-six-zero-three-two-six-one-four-one-three, thus requesting a variance of seventy-two feet. Where no tower can be located closer than seven-hundred-and-fifty feet on a horizontal plane to an existing dwelling, the applicant can provide five-hundred-and-fifty feet to one-oh-eight Caroline Drive, tax grid number six-zero-five-six-zero-three-two-five-nine-three-nine-six, thus requesting a variance of a hundred-ninety-two feet. Where no tower can be located closer than seven-hundred-and-fifty feet on a horizontal plane to an existing dwelling, the applicant can provide seven-hundred-and-thirty-two feet to one-oh-seven Caroline Drive East, tax grid number six-zero-five-six-zero-three-two-three-eight-eight-three-nine, thus requesting a variance of eighteen feet. Where no tower can be located closer than seven-hundred-and-fifty feet on a horizontal plane to an existing dwelling, the applicant can provide five-hundred-and-eighty-five feet to one-fourteen Caroline Drive East, tax grid number six-zero-five-six-zero-three-two-five-zero-three-six-three, thus requesting a variance of a hundred-and-sixty-five feet. Where no tower can be located closer than seven-hundred-and-fifty feet on a horizontal plane to an existing dwelling, the applicant can provide five-hundred-and-fifty feet to one-hundred-and-ten Caroline Drive East, tax grid number six-zero-five-six-zero-three-two-five-five-three-seventy-eight, thus requesting a variance of two-hundred feet. Where no tower can be located closer than seven-hundred-and-fifty feet on a horizontal plane to an existing dwelling unit, the applicant can provide six-hundred-and-forty-nine feet to one-sixteen Caroline Drive East, tax grid number six-zero-five-six-zero-three-two-four-two-three-five-two, thus requesting a variance of one-oh-one feet. The property is located at one-ten Chelsea Road and is identified by tax grid number six-zero-five-six-zero-three-three-three-nine-four-two-zero in the Town of Wapanger. Okay, could I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
John, I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second, please?
This is, this is Lisa, yes, I have a second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Okay, before we, before we start, I'd just like to kind of set the expectation here over tonight. Uh, the plan is for the, the, everybody's knowledge, the, the planning board is the lead agency. Uh, no decision can be rendered by the zoning board until the planning board makes an environmental determination. Uh, the, the issue before the zoning board is that of a distance from the tower to the adjoining dwellings, as I read. That is the only issue before the zoning board tonight. Um, I'd like to actually invite the applicant now, because you, Neil, Neil, I think I see you there, correct? Okay, I, I would like to invite again the applicant, uh, to basically state what, what he needs and why he needs it, and then, uh, we'll proceed to questions after that.
Great, uh, thank you, Chairman, for recognizing, uh, me to, I, for those who I haven't met and for the sake of the public, uh, my name is Neil Alexander, I'm a partner of the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, I'm here today on behalf of Tarpon Towers for the area variance as read by the chair and, however they noticed, uh, by, by town. Um, I, I think, Chairman, if I can go back just a couple of steps, I understand your scope of review is limited, and I completely concur with your assessment about the lead agency, and tonight is really informational and catch-up from the last time we were here, and I thought I'd just run through that really quickly for the sake of the public.
Sure.
Um, thank you. So, um, this application actually began on October ninth of twenty-nineteen. Um, at that time, we jointly submitted an application to the... ...to discuss this, uh, showing this variation.
Yeah, you're, you're very staticky and you're having headphone issues.
Uh, I may have to switch to the other one, which will be unattractive, but, is that any better?
It's better.
Okay, thank you, Lisa, for letting me know. Um, so in any event, we came in, in, in November and met with both of the boards, the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. We got, we received input from the town planner, the town engineer and other consultants, um, as to how and where we should do visual resource evaluation, and then we submitted a complete application to both boards in December of this year. We actually haven't been back in front of the zoning board of appeals since December, um, because as you noted, Chairman, the planning board is the lead agency, and you've been processing most of the issues, um, related to seeker with the planning board. At the May public, public hearing by Zoom that we had recently, the planning board cleared us to come meet with you, um, seeing themselves as near the end of the seeker process and wanting your input, uh, before they made their determination of significance. Um, and, and that's really how, how we came to you. We made a pretty significant, um, submission on May twenty-ninth to your board where we tried to catch you up, hopeful, I know B has done extraordinary yeoman's work getting everything up on the town website of the various submissions, but just for the sake of the, the public, um, just to make them aware, back in January, the town hired a wireless consultant who has put Verizon through a series of, um, requests of additional information, Verizon being our anchor tenant on this tower, um, and co-applicant with us, and that wireless consultant has issued two different reports about the need for this facility, and also, um, the lack of, um, ability to lower the height on this facility, and he's confirmed that as well as the radio frequency emissions. The reason why I connect that aspect to this part of the application is because the standard, um, for a variance for a public utility, which Verizon and Tarpon are as your applicants here, is not your standard variance that you just used for the area variance test for the applicant before us. It's actually a different test. It's called the public necessity test, and essentially, it is a easier test to meet, um, and, and what it talks about is balancing the interests of the locality against the need of the utility to provide its service. And, um, and where a zoning board of, basically, it says that a zoning board of appeals cannot exclude a wireless facility from a community where it has shown a need for its facilities, which is what the wireless consultant has validated, um, and that connects to this variance that we're, we're seeking from, um, seven-hundred-and-fifty feet, um, for those six properties, um, and, and that has all been confirmed by the wireless consultant as far as the need for the facility. Um, and, um, let me just restate on, for my notes here, really quickly, what is the facility ultimately? Um, so we're proposing this for Hobbit Hill Farm. Um, and Hobbit Hill Farm, the portion of that farm in the Town of Wapanger as opposed to the Town of Fishkill is approximately twenty-eight acres. And we're going to the rear of that property using, other than for construction, we're using, we're going to, once the facility is built, um, we're going to use all the existing access points and, um, navigate no different than anyone who would be going to the riding ring. We're putting in a little bit of a wetland crossing in the federal wetland that involves less than a tenth of an acre disturbance, which will be done pursuant to a nationwide permit on notice with the Army Corps as opposed to a, um, individual permit. Um, ultimately, the facility is, it's a hundred-foot-by-hundred-foot lease area. We are fencing in approximately sixty-five feet by seventy-five feet at the very rear of the property where it meets the Town of Wapanger's border. We're proposing a hundred-and-fifty-foot-tall monopole. Um, the center line of Verizon's antennas will be at a hundred-and-forty-six feet above the grade level. Uh, we have also made it available per the request of Town Emergency Service to, for the, for them to co-locate their antennas on, um, our facility. Uh, I'm trying to think of the, of other salient aspects before you all may have, um... Any questions? A little sad, a lot of, of questions.
A little muffled again, you, you, a little distorted, you?
So... Yeah, is that better?
That's better.
Okay, I'm so sorry about this. I'm not really sure why it's... Didn't have this problem the other night, I apologize. I think that's pretty much at least initially, um, we talked a lot in our, um, submission, but I think ultimately, I hope you saw that because of the proximity to Stony Kill, we did an additional visual resource evaluation. Um, we ultimately have received, um, a shipo. The Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation have issued a sign-off, um, determining that the proposed facility will have no effect as a result of, um, not only our information we provided, but the additional float that was required of us by Stony Kill, um, itself. And I think that's pretty much where I would stop at this point. Um, I, I, I would also, I guess, lastly note that in our original submission, there was an alternatives analysis as to several of the locations that we did consider and why they were ruled out, either as outside or search area or ring, or not available. I think it's also really important ultimately that when you, you pull back and look at the variance that we're asking for, it's important to recognize that in order, if, if, if you assume for a moment that the base of a tower's, you know, a foot wide, for the sake, it's, it's closer to three, but if you assume it's a foot wide and you're trying to be seven-hundred-and-fifty feet in every direction, that square of one-thousand-five-hundred-and-one feet by one-thousand-five-hundred-and-one feet would require essentially a fifty-one acre property. So basically, any, sorry about that. Any property in the area in order to serve this area, yeah, I guess we all saw my dog. Sorry about that.
That's good.
But in any event, any property in the area would have to be at least fifty-one acres just in theory in order to not need variances from this section as we are requesting. So I just thought that that was really a pertinent point, um, as a way giving a variance to us for being within, um, you know, the closest person, I believe, if I remember correctly, I don't remember, it was five-hundred-and-fifty or five-hundred-and-twenty-eight feet. Um, I think it was five-hundred-and-twenty-eight feet, if I'm just scanning here from the notice. Uh, no, it was five-hundred-and-fifty feet.
Yes.
Um, so I think that's really important, because anyone else who would come for any other property in the area would just as likely need a variance from this section, and whether it would be one property or six properties or sixty properties, you know, is up for debate, but there are no other properties in this vicinity that would work for us, and that's where, um, Nick Smith from Aerosmith, the site consultants, memorandum comes in as to the other landlords he spoke to that, um, rejected him as a real estate matter, for example. We were rejected by the VA in the Town of Fishkill from using their water tank, which a lot of the people on, um, Caroline Drive East look out their front door at. So, um, you know, our utility infrastructure isn't that different than that utility infrastructure that's there for the, for the VA. So I'll, I'll pause here, we, we're more than welcome to answer any questions, hopefully that I can. Um, Nick Smith from Aerosmith, the site consultant is here if you'd like to know more about his exhibit F to our December submission about alternative candidates, and, um, I can always share my screen if you want to go over any aspects of the visual resource evaluations we've done.
Okay, all right, thanks, Neil, that was a very good presentation. Just for everybody's knowledge, I am going to open the, uh, floor for questions from the board first, and once the board has finished their questions, then we'll open it up to the general public. Uh, but just for everyone's knowledge, just to, uh, upfront, that, uh, the board is prohibited by law, the potential effects of RF other than ensuring our... That we will not... Um, okay, board members, I'm... ...out, being out... Back in... ...around there, the other... Specific questions you may have, but this...
I have no questions, this is Tom.
Yeah, I, I actually have a question. At, at the top of the... Yeah, sorry, the... Showing kind of one array at the top. And, uh, the emergency... Um, it... Could possibly be...
Yes, um, there, there is, um, right now, there are several carriers operating in, in this market. Um, we don't actually know the specifics of what emergency services would like, um, to use. They tend to use, um, whip omnidirectional antennas as opposed to, um, panel antennas, which is what we've proposed, so we wouldn't know for sure, but, um, we've laid out the, the compound, the sixty-five-by-seventy-five compound, assuming that obviously, um, T-Mobile will spring next on in the process of merging, so that's one potential use, additional user, and AT&amp;T would be a, a potential additional user in addition to Verizon, so we could see, um, there being value to, um, those two carriers going at low, low, low... Vicinity and at what heights they... About proprietary information, it would be... To use as a structure.
Okay, I mean, is there a notion of, uh, like, how much of the, the... Potentially be maxed out with equipment, like, the top twenty feet, the top thirty feet?
Oh, okay, I, I'm sorry, yes. The question. The standard methodology for antenna separation is you use horizontal center separation of about ten feet in order to prevent radio frequency interference, because these carriers are all operating in very similar frequencies but different channels. So the, the rule of thumb and best methodology in practice is ten feet of separation from center line to center line. So if any, uh, Verizon's antennas are going to be at a hundred-and-forty feet center line, top of it is approximately a hundred-and-fifty feet, a little, quite, just a little bit less, um, then you could expect to see carrier number two at a hundred-and-thirty-six feet, carrier number three at a hundred-and-twenty-six feet, assuming it would work for them, or... And, and, and what gets... So there's two aspects to, to your question, and I may be over answering it. There's the real estate aspect of it, and then there's the radio... There's the real estate aspect of it and then there's the radio frequency aspect as to how much of the, how much service that will functionally provide them in their overall network.
Yeah, my question is more based upon the visuals of looking at the tower. I know I think of the balloon test renderings actually. And uh, you know, based upon if you have, you know, the top fifty feet with arrays based on a piece of art, it's a little bit different, different look potentially.
Yes, I I think in this marketplace right now and the likelihood of the merger going through, I think it's fair to assume there'll be three carriers using that. That would be a, as opposed to many years ago when, you know, um three of those carriers were separate and you would have been looking at closer to five. So I think the top thirty feet would look like the modeling that you saw of the top ten feet.
Yeah, Neil, in the beginning you had mentioned that the type of pole that it was, didn't quite get that. What was that?
I think I called it a monopole. Is that what is it?
Right. That's opposed to a.
A lattice tower. So a monopole is a freestanding single um sort of cylinder structure, I guess, for lack of a better way to phrase it.
Gotcha.
Whereas a lattice tower is uh has has three points at the bottom essentially coming up or four. Um and and has cross bracing all the way up as those four um poles come up. So the uh classic, bigger than you'd see in a wireless. Companies usually use lattice towers to run um high tension lines, like if you see like in, like when you go to drive across, across the street into Pleasant Valley, right? And you see all the uh the K-line coming through Titusville on the great inch.
Yes. Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about. Okay. Uh any other questions from the board?
Yeah, one of the question I had was uh in the top of the a hundred and fifty feet height, are you able to install blinking light?
Great question. Um at that height, our initial due diligence has suggested that there is no need to light or mark this tower. We have no interference with any FAA and so the normal presumption is if you go over a hun- over two hundred feet, you have to do it. And then we have done what's called a tow air, which is a um a a desktop resource tool that interacts with the FAA and they have said that we do not need to light or mark.
So at this point, no plan to install any blinking light or anything?
Correct, correct. It's not required.
Hey, any other questions from the board? Okay, show the record. No more questions from the board before I, before I open up the floor to the other folks on the, on the call tonight, just a couple of quick points. Uh for the record, I'd like to acknowledge that the the board had received from uh Mr. Chris Barkley uh memorandum and exhibits and also uh the memorandum in opposition and the exhibits uh attached to that. We also did receive an email from Mr. Rick Harrison. Uh Mr. Rick Harrison is at one oh six Caroline Drive and we did receive a letter from a Mr. Sean Cahill, who is on twenty-one fourth and the first drive. Uh in addition to that, since we got several folks on the call tonight, we're gonna ask you to please, we'll, we'll try to, again, it's a virtual call, right? So we try to do this as orderly as possible and we'll try to select you folks as best we can. Uh also, we'd like to limit the comments and questions to about three minutes. Uh and we'll, we'll, we'll let you know when you're coming up on your three minutes. So at this point, I'd like to open the, the floor up to comments or questions from uh the audience.
Peter, could we have Lisa just go through that raise hand process as she's, she knows it well?
It's just bad to let everyone know. So um if for those of you who may not be familiar with Zoom, there are two ways that you can indicate that you'd like to speak. One is there's a chat function. If you hover your mouse over the bottom of your screen, it will have, um one of the things you'll see is chat. And if you put your name on that list, we will call on you from that list. Um there is one person on there already. The other option is if you click on the uh participants list and bring that up, you'll have the opportunity to raise your hand and I see that three people have done that on there already. So we're going to try to work through those two methods first and then when we're done, we will um open the floor more generally to see who we have. I only see one person who is on the phone and uh if that person wanted to raise their hand, it is star nine on the phone and we will be able to know that you want to raise your hand. Did that cover it, B?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Okay. The first person that I saw on chat was Mark Springer. Mr. Chair, if you'd like to recognize him.
Yeah, Mark Springer. Are you on the line, Mark?
Here.
Okay, Mark, we, we have a little bit of a hard time hearing you.
So now.
A little bit louder.
Hello?
Can you guys hear?
I can hear him, but he's faint. He's not very loud. And now I don't hear him at all. I see your lips moving.
Can you hear us, Mark?
Hello, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Okay.
All right. Neil, you're, you're a little faint, but let's give it a shot.
I'll talk loudly.
Perfect.
Uh my name is Mark Springer and my wife Carla and I have lived at one oh eight Caroline Drive East for twenty-five years. Our children, Liam and Samantha, and we're one of the variance requests we're made and the variance for our property was requested at one hundred and ninety feet. Um I want to thank the board for taking the time to review this and to consider our thoughts here. And I want to thank all my neighbors who have put all the thought and energy in their opposition to this proposal. Uh I assume that the main function of this board is to serve the community and I think you're gonna hear from the community that we're sadly opposed to the destruction of this tower. Uh Mr. Alexander is very uh slick and skilled in his proposals. Um and I, you know, I take note of what you say about the planning board, his lead agency and your scope of view is limited. Uh but I I I guess it's a question, you can still kill this proposal, we're not granting the variance, um I assume, and if you can, you can respond at that moment. Uh Mr. Alexander talks about the need for this facility. I would ask whose need is it? Is it the community's need or is it Verizon's? Is it a public necessity or is it Verizon's necessity? And if Verizon needs a fifty-one acre property, cannot approach upon anybody's homes, I believe they're a multi-billion dollar corporation that could find fifty-one acres nearby. You know, their own website says that coverage in this area is excellent. They have a map on their website showing that there is no need for any additional coverage because they have excellent coverage. If you're a consumer looking to purchase a cell phone, they'll tell you that this exact area is perfect. So I would ask, I would inquire where they get their idea for a need and independent, uh a consultant hired by them doesn't seem very independent. Uh if you look at the map uh that the, the variance is being requested, it, it, it is the entire of my property. It's the entirety of my property. It is the front road. Street and it's my neighbors across the street. This is not a thirty-five foot variance for a pool as Mr. Alexander points out. It's a much more egregious violation of the community, community standards. This board denied a ten-foot variance for a basketball court a few years ago because it was too close to the critical road. The critical road that you're now crossing and having a variance across. You know, we have lots of concerns and I understand that, that they don't necessarily come into play here. You know, the, the variance should be denied. And I would also, just one last thing I would like to point out, there are eight or ten properties in the town of Fishkill that are not under the purveyance of this board and I get that, but they're our neighbors and they're part of our community and your job is to serve the community, even our, our neighborhood.
I already mentioned your minutes.
I'll, I'll stop there. I've got enough. Thank you very much for your time.
Sure. Thank you for your comments. Okay.
Is Chris Barkley would be next?
Chris, you're here. Chris, can you hear us? You're muted.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the, the board to.
Chris, your name and address. Thanks.
Um thank you, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board for uh hearing us at this uh, at this public hearing. Uh you noted in the beginning that I had put in a letter, it was really.
It was my voice, too.
A memorandum um put together by our attorney, Andrew Campanelli, who's a renowned expert in this area, along with uh thirty other. In opposition that I brought to the, to the board's attention. Uh our concerns here and as it's kind of, and it says in the uh, in the memorandum that I, they gave you, that, I'm gonna read a quick little passage here, was that as explicitly, as explicitly. The reasons. Applicable to the current applicant's zoning application as with respect to the personal privacy service facilities was to be explicitly stated purpose and among other things preserving the character and appearance of the town, protecting the scenic historic environmental natural or man-made resources of the community, preserving property values, minimizing the total number and height of towers and antennas to the community and configuring them so as to minimize. I would say uh that. A fifteen-story tower um is in complete uh opposition to what the, to what I just stated. I can imagine any one of you living uh in your, in a neighborhood uh similar to this residential neighborhood, looking at your. Fifteen-story tower, which uh the. Structures on it uh would not have an adverse impact. And I, I think anybody with a, a really an open mind would, uh would think that. Y'all, Sankey would have them come by their place to take a look from their vantage, walking out the back door. Home uh right here in, in the, on Chelsea Road, which we love. Our neighbors drive by and they tell us they, they love the house and putting a fifteen-story tower in the back is, is ridiculous. There's just no way you can justify that. And. Previous. Said that uh ranting, looking at that application, said that there wouldn't be any undesirable. And there wouldn't be any adverse visual effect and that's right from one of the board members on the previous uh application. I can't see how you wouldn't look out my back door and hurting. Undesirable uh change to the. Have a, an adverse visual effect. For those. I employ you to read through the memorandum in opposition and the uh attachments uh that go with it and you can clearly see that this uh would certainly have an adverse impact and you'll note on there whether it's uh to this board's consideration, it would have an adverse impact on our property values, a significant adverse impact. If somebody's coming here and they look and they see a twenty, a fifteen-story tower, regardless of its cylinder or otherwise, um it's, it would, it would kill a deal on a, on a house, uh somebody, potentially somebody buying the house here. So um I won't speak on behalf of the thirty, uh plus more uh folks who signed this with us, signed this uh memorandum with us and I know others that contacted. Uh and I again, if anybody wants to come and take a look from my vantage point, um I surely welcome you at, at any time and I'll make arrangements for you to uh, to come here and I'll show my name. Have a severe impact on uh me and my families personally here at the, at the house. Thank you.
Sorry, but I meant to cut you off.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Okay, who would be next in line?
Rick Harrison.
Suzanne?
Rick Harrison.
Rick Harrison, can you hear us, Rick?
Yes, can you hear us?
I am, I see. Oh, there you go. Yeah, I see. Okay, Rick, for the record, your name and address, please?
Yes, it's Rick and Maria Harrison at one oh six Caroline Drive East.
Okay, all yours.
Um you have these setbacks for a reason, to protect us. So I guess what we're asking you to do is protect us. I don't want to grant this variance. I don't want this in my backyard. I don't think that, you know, anything that you guys are doing tonight um can stop it. You can give a recommendation, is that correct?
If we, we do, we're, our purview, uh not. Ultimately. Enter deny the variance as it pertains to those six properties.
So if you don't grant the, if you don't grant the variance, they can't go through with this, is that correct?
I. What other avenues they may have, but that's.
Okay, we, we need you to protect us. I, I miss my, I mean, I will try to leave my emotion out of this, but it's very upsetting and I appreciate that we're going back to when this all began, but I want to remind everybody, we're still dealing with a pandemic. Some of us had, had illnesses in our family and weren't able to notice the cardboard signs that were knocked over on the road in front of the horse farm. Many of us didn't know about this, right? So I worry. I worry about with what Chris said, I agree with him and support him one hundred percent and thank God he was on the phone because when you announced this, it wasn't even clear that there was thirty letters attached to what Chris and he's had done. I support Mark and our entire community. I'm, I'm really worried about our health. I, I don't want such a thing here. I, I haven't seen evidence and maybe we missed it, but our, I mean, what is the concern there as well? I mean, we spend a lot of time in our home, outside of our home. We all as a community take great pride in our neighborhood and we would hate to have something like that in our backyard. It's horrible. And if you were all here on Saturday walking the properties, I would have loved to join you because I, I can't imagine you came through and thought, wow, this would be great back here. This would really add, add to this community because I really don't even, we don't need it. I, I didn't see any evidence that we need such a thing, not to mention, um, you know, we still have damage from the prior storms that we've had, so we're still trying to clean that up and now we have to worry about this. So I just ask, along with my husband and my neighbors, that you protect us and that you don't grant this variance.
Hey, you didn't cut us off, I guess.
No, you guys, you, you guys made it. You had about five seconds left. Thank, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate what you guys are doing.
Sure. Okay, who would be next up?
It's uh, I don't know last names, but they're listed as Karen and Don.
Hi, my name is Don Bowles. My wife is here with me, Karen. We live at ninety-four Chelsea Road. Uh mostly concerned about the visual aesthetics in our backyard, the property values that would go down because of it. Uh I have a few questions. Uh one of them was already put to you. Uh it, you said there was a need for this tower. I'd like to know the veracity of the need. I'm not take, I'm not calling into question the consultant, but maybe I am. What, where, where is the need defined? And is that need uh biased towards the, towards the builder or towards the people that want the tower to go up?
I can actually respond to that question if you'd like. Um. There was a consult, the initial materials were supplied by the applicant and then the town actually retained its own um RF expert and other expert to assess the veracity of the claims that Verizon was made. So um the person's name is Doug Fishman and um his record there before the planning board now and they will be before this board for the next meeting, but uh he verified that there is a gap in coverage at this location and he, that it was needed in terms of the public utility use. I'm sorry for my dog growling in the background.
Okay, I hope that didn't buy into my three minutes.
I did.
I'll give you an extra two seconds.
So I have a couple of questions also. Is that um when this town, when this tower goes up, it's slated for a hundred and fifty feet. How many more feet can it go up without anybody questioning the height? I, I believe I was doing some research and I believe that uh other carriers can come in and raise the height to the, of this tower by tens of feet without ever having to ask anybody yes, no, or boo.
That's not true.
So sorry, it barbed it. What was that, please?
That's not true. Um the same way they're asking for the six variances for the distance, that would cause them to have to come back and ask for another variance to go up. So what is typical when these towers go up, the one that's, is building it, in this case, Verizon, they take the plum spot and then any other carrier should they come would go below them.
I have another, I have another question, okay? There was, there was a a subsequent balloon test done for Stony Kill to ensure that there wasn't any visual or eyesore for too Stony Kill. And I understand that I wouldn't, if I was on Stony Kill and walking around in the in the wilderness, I wouldn't want to see it, but what about the people? What about the residents here? Doesn't that, don't, don't we, don't we matter? Aren't we gonna be looking at this? So you you go to the extra, you go to the extra, uh, effort of doing a another balloon test for Stony Kill because of the aesthetics and then everybody else is lost after that?
Why do they matter and we don't is what we want to know. We're taxpayers here.
Barbara, was the balloon test announced to the public?
The first one was. The second one was requested by Stony Kill. I don't believe they got shots of the balloon test. I mean, Neil should really answer this, but I think that they felt
I can answer, I can.
Yeah, I think Neil should.
This has, this has to do with the fact that as an FCC licensee, there's not only this process that we're going through, but there's also processes we have to go through with the FCC and programmatically for his for the potential impact to, uh, Native American tribes. And there's a whole what's called the NIPA review that's separate and apart and the planning board and the town have no jurisdiction over that. As part of that review, Stony Kill asked for, as a historic or 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 resource, identified resource for some additional views. We did submit that report as well as a courtesy. So everyone knew and understood. So to try and sort of help framework it, and I know this answer is not going to be satisfactory, but it it just happens to be the rules of the road. Um, and 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 neither my client nor the town are involved in making those rules. But the way you assess a visual impact and effect is based upon identified inventory and known receptors. So there has to be something unique and it has to be looked at from the standpoint of the effect to that resource. So for example, some of the photographs we had taken original visual visual resource evaluation were down by the Hudson River because the Hudson River is obviously a known and important inventory resource. Um, I believe we took photos because of the status of the Chelsea Post Office and several other locations like that. So that is why those got different photo locations and a heightened awareness and scrutiny because they are treated as a matter of law and as a matter of regulatory review differently than, yes, a a person's backyard. And I know that's I know that's inflammatory and it's a little bit, um, it isn't said to be incendiary. It's it's said to be informative and to sort of explain the way the rules of the process are set up um, in this tension between federal, uh, regulation of telecommunications and some remainder elements of local land use input by municipalities. So I I hope I didn't, my intention was not to offend. It was to inform by sharing those facts.
Okay, I have one more question.
Okay, you're saying?
One more question, real quick.
Yep.
You, the Harvard Hill Horse Farm is very big farm. And there are places on the Harvard Hill Horse Farm, you could have put this cell tower without having to go to any variances. The only caveat to that is it was in the Fishkill Township, which I think locked you down and told you you couldn't build there. So why would Wapengers entertain this as an issue or as as proposal?
I I don't know that as a fact that does anybody on Barbara or Neil know it?
So Chairman, I was gonna, one of the things I had wanted to say indirectly to that point, but if you go to our drawings and and I I don't have the, I don't know if I can screen share right this second, but let me just explain this really quickly. So if you go to sheet C one of our drawings, what you'll see is, of course, we would have liked to have put this, you know, fully compliant on both sides of our property, east and west. But what you'll see is we couldn't go any further to the west, by the way, because there's a wetland to the west. Similarly, if you go to the east, there's a narrow pathway through which we're trying to balance the amount of disturbance to stay under the tenth of an acre that you're allowed to 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 take of a federal wetland under a nationwide permit as opposed to an individual permit review. And so we can't get this facility really any farther east. So there were, when you look at sheet C one and you see the existing Army Corps Town of Wapenter regulated freshwater pond on the property, you see the other, um, wetlands, federal wetland resources, and you try and balance all those things while also recognizing that this is one of the largest properties in the vicinity that was available where the landlord didn't say no to us, including the landlord across the street with the multifamily who said no to us. That is really what we're trying to do. And so as 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 Attorney Cobb for the board, you know, noted, what what you're trying to balance here is we have a need. Um, and that need is to provide safe, adequate and reliable wireless service like no other, you know, no different than any other utility. Um, and as we're recognized under New York State laws, utility. And we're trying to provide safe, adequate and reliable service to the public. And we need to do that in this area. We looked at many different properties. This property fit the bill more than any other property. It was real estate available. And then we're threading and trying to balance between the wetlands on site, the existing structures on site in the neighborhood. So if we moved it to the east instead of this neighborhood coming out and saying why this these six houses, we'd have six backyards to the east, also in the Town of Wapenter. So we're just trying to balance this into a location that would make sense. And 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 limit the view from from identified and inventory and significant visual resources in the area. So that's that's how it came about that we wound up needing the variance from these specific properties.
All I have to say is you're a good lawyer. I'd like you to be on my side at some point. I made my point. Uh, thank you for giving me my time.
Okay, Don, thank you. Thanks for the comments. Okay, who would be next, Lisa?
Brad Van Buren.
Brad, are you there?
Here, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Brad, for the record, please just state your name and address.
Brad Van Buren, eighty six Chelsea Road.
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to make the, make sure the town is aware that in the Town of Fishkill, there is a uh, tower used by Verizon less than two miles away from this current site. And looking at the proposed map that was provided by Verizon, the coverage doesn't seem to be really increasing that much for this area. It's not really affecting our area. It's affecting more the western half of the Hudson River and then to the south too. It doesn't really benefit our area to have to deal with this, uh, tower. Additionally, in the memorandum that was submitted to submitted by Mr. Barclay, uh, there was an article given in from, I believe either two thousand three or two thousand six, that Harvard Hill Farms had basically received taxpayer money from the Town of Wapengers and the Town of Fishkill in an effort to keep it from development. Now, I think a cellphone tower that is producing revenue for the homeowner or the property owner is one thing that is definitely commercial development. And I would like the the talent to go back and make sure that that is effective still because they received hundreds of thousands of dollars from it. And the article that Mr. Barclay provided will show that. My last point is that, uh, I do, I work in marketing down in New York City, um, specifically with marketing on into people's cell phones and everything like that. And I think a tower of this magnitude is just unnecessary for the future that we have. Uh, I mean, Mr. Alexander will probably disagree with me, but working with Verizon themselves and their marketing department with five G coming around, we don't really need to build this tower. It's redundant because you can use existing infrastructure such as Castle Point Water Tower to make a much smaller device that will give even better coverage than a cellphone tower would. You'd be able to put it on utility poles, existing buildings, everything like that. You don't need a tower anymore. We are a few years away from having this technology and not needing towers. In Orange County, there's five G already. It's coming to our area. We are basically investing in loo, in Verizon is investing in losing our property values for technology that's already outdated across the river. And I just want the board to be aware of those.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the comments, Brad.
Chris Barkley, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry?
Chris Barkley.
Chris Barkley, you had a turn already.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Seth Flamholtz.
Who's who's up next?
Seth Flamholtz.
Hello?
Yep, you're here, Seth?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Seth, please, your name and address for the record.
Seth Flamholtz, one ten East Caroline Drive.
Okay, Seth, all yours.
Um, thank you for, uh, giving us the opportunity to hear us. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody in the neighborhood, in the community, uh, for sharing their thoughts and actually, being that I came in late, uh, they shared a lot of my thoughts, but, uh, in addition, um, the variance, my property is being affected the most. Apparently it's two hundred feet of variance. According to that, my direct neighbor behind me, as I believe Mark Springer also stated, is eighteen feet across. So my whole property through my house, across the street to his property is also, uh, needing a requested a variance. One of the members of with the pool issue said, uh, one of the reasons by giving that variance was that it didn't seem substantial. I think two hundred feet on my property is qualifies as substantial. That's just, that's just one of my my thoughts here. And it's 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 kind of a bit of, uh, appalling and insulting to actually even consider that my property. They did a balloon test. I saw the balloon test last year and I did see the Stony Kill balloon test back in, I believe it was in March or February. It did appear to me that that was a lot lower than the other one that was last year. Mr. Alexander also said it's called, unquote, the rule of the road to do such a thing for Stony Kill or those, uh, those places, but it's, it it was not, it was definitely not the height of the first one. I can, I can, I could see that. And, uh, as far as the need of this cell tower, again, it was it was brought up before whose need? It's it's certainly not at our expense in the neighborhood, in this community, that we quote unquote need a, uh, a cell tower, especially in my backyard, that I could probably, you know, throw a rock and hit at this point. So yeah, I'm just, I'm just voicing my opinion and I and I I I really find it, uh, troubling to actually that we we got this far as far as, uh, considering this, uh, cell tower. That's that's all.
All right, thank you, Seth. Okay, Lisa, who is in the queue?
Carla Springer.
Carla Springer? Carla Springer, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you very much.
Hi, you.
Um, okay, let me speak up. Can you hear me better? Hello?
Perfect, perfect. Please state your name and address for the record.
Carla Springer, one oh eight Caroline Drive East.
Thank you.
One of the properties that is, uh, seeking to get a variance from, um, your board. This may be the most important vote you will make in your lifetime. When you have the livelihood, the health and the wealth of hundreds of people in your hands, adding a tower on property behind my property could cause more chances of fires and homes burning down in this neighborhood. There are hundreds of five G towers of holes catching on fire and burning down neighborhoods. There are animals in our area that are endangered and no one seems to care. We have bald eagles. We have bog turtles. We have Indiana bats. And nothing is being said about that right now. They depend on the wetlands to live. We don't need a cell tower in our neighborhood. For, it was very strange. Almost a year ago, I noticed that our cell coverage, which was perfect, became a bit patchy. I had to go to the windows to actually get coverage. I had to go outside to make phone calls. Everything prior to about a year ago, my cellphone was great. So I'm not saying anyone did anything to make the cell tower, to make our coverage worse so that then they could say, we have to put this tower in. But I think most of you know our self-coverage was great. And if any of you noticed in the last year, it didn't, it wasn't as great. You know, you should speak up about that. That's really important. The fifty foot height of the height of the tower and only one or two people or three people on it is not true. I'm sure once that tower goes in, we're gonna have, and look at the towers, they're disgusting. I have the most beautiful view in my backyard right now, the the birds, the the bees, the everything that sounds wonderful. You put a tower in, you got the ugly crap all over it, okay? You then have the sound of the generator going off. Here, I have the sound of a generator that when it doesn't work, this is what it sounds like. Can you hear it? It's a horrifying sound. It's a, it's the most horrifying. I don't even know what my my thing is. It's a horrifying sound and towers often have problems with their generators. They're loud. They will disturb our 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 animal life. They'll disturb our own. In addition to that, the, um, other cell towers, where was it? I, the, uh, I recently they've discovered that they will be using drones the cell towers to inspect them, to be doing whatever. If you think something's wrong with it, they'll be bringing in drones. So now not only do we have a generator, noisy, noisy generators, ugly cell tower, now we're gonna have drones flying around checking out the cell tower. This is not needed, people. The zone, you are the only people who can help us. I'm not sure where the planning board is at, but where you are at are the only people who can save this this town. You will change lives for hundreds of years if you just vote no for this zoning variance. I don't want people in my 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 space coming.
Carla, I'm sorry, Carla, we're gonna have to, gonna have to cut you off.
Thank you.
But I, we appreciate your comments. Thank you. Lisa?
The only other hand I have raised right now is John Behnicke. And I apologize if I mispronounce your name.
Close enough.
John, you're here, John?
John Behnicke, sixteen Booth Boulevard. Um, my property, uh, backs up onto the property that will have the tower. I won't be as affected as those who need a variance uh, for the tower. Um, I thank everyone for speaking their minds tonight and I thank the board for hearing our concerns. I'd like to point out just two quick issues. One, that there can't be two truths, right? There can't be a truth that this tower is both needed by Verizon and that Verizon tells me when they want to sell me their product that we have great service here. Relying on either the sales end or they're relying on their infrastructure development. They're lying somewhere though. Uh, the other quick point I'd like to mention, uh, someone asked about the potential for the tower to go any higher. Um, according to the twenty twelve Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act, section six four oh nine A, uh, once towers are approved, they are allowed to go up an additional twenty feet further um, without a public process. So we really, if 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 these variances are granted and this tower is built, uh, they could go up up to twenty feet higher from the existing tower that's built without us really having any uh, public voice at all there. Most of my concerns were really hit on by other members, uh, of the community. I think it just goes back to the zoning board and both I'm sorry, the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. Considering the concerns of the community as a whole, we have, you know, zoning laws and policies in place to consider the the health and vitality every dimension you could imagine. And right now we are currently in a recession. We're heading towards most likely a We're heading towards most likely a depressed economy for the foreseeable future and to grant these variances in that climate would be detrimental to the wealth and value of properties within this neighborhood. In 2014, the National Institute of Science Law and Public Policy in Washington DC found in a study that 94% of home buyers and renters that have nearby tower would negatively impact their interest in their property and the price they'd be willing to pay or rent that property. Another 2018 study by the Journal of Real Estate Finance and Economics found that properties declined between 2.4%, 6% on average, and 9.78% on average. So we're in a recession. This is a working class, middle class community and neighborhood and that variance is going to be great for Verizon, sure, to suddenly have two truths and not one lie they're telling, but it will be absolutely detrimental to families who are struggling right now financially, who are, whose beauty of their property, and I know there'll be whole, you know, discussion about what Parkin does have to answer for and not answer for and do we consider property values, but if we're talking about quality of life and beautification of property, that's what people spend their dollars on. So the science shows definitively, the research shows, that people will pay less when a tower is in an area, whether they are wrong for paying less because, you know, maybe there's not any perceived or not any real health risk or environmental risk, that's besides the fact. The fact is, people perceive towers as a negative, they pay less. In our current climate and context right now, I think any vote to grant these variances would be absolutely inconsiderate and ignorant of the community around here. And I just couldn't really imagine that happening in what we're all experiencing as probably the worst economic time period of our lives. And I see you the rest of my time. Thank you.
All right, John, thank you. Thank you for your comments, John. Lisa, anybody else in the queue?
Yes, we, the person who was on the iPad before as KLM, it looked like she was having some technical difficulties because she went static for a minute and now I don't see her anymore.
Is there a KLM on the line?
So I would, Robin Lacari had posted on chat, I believe that she would like to speak, and then maybe when you're done with Robin, we can see if KLM has made it back onto the meeting.
Robin, can you hear us? You're muted. Yeah, unmute yourself, Robin. There you go.
Okay, sorry about that. He called Carlo Rowe. He's a P tonight. That they, you know, can, for the, thing, um, for that, that, or is necessary, they will call, on the south portion of the Town of Wapinger, I've only heard complaints from the property owners in this area that would damage the aesthetics of their neighborhood, potentially, property values. I have a question. Has the board heard complaints about a lack of cell coverage in the west portion of the Town of Wapinger? So I won't ask any answer to that, but to think of that. Are there these kind of complaints? Because I haven't, no one has come to these meetings discussing their lack of cell phone coverage. Also, according to the good practice by Verizon, they tend to try to use existing structures and municipal property as their first consideration. The water tank at Castle Point at the VA would be a more suitable structure and, let's see, oh, and should be built there. There's a couple of issues here. Apparently, the VA denied Verizon an ability to build on that particular structure. Also, the Town of Fishkill, which is, I know Mr. Alexander talked a lot about wetlands, but the truth is, the Town of Fishkill doesn't allow these towers. So he is, they are wanting to go right on the border. So this whole idea that Verizon needs this particular site and property, I think that's misleading. I think they could find a property that would be more suitable and less damaging to established neighborhoods. I'm concerned about this. This would be the second time that an established neighborhood has been disrupted. Tractor Supply Powerhouse was another one. So I'm just hoping that I do see it as.